So it's five o'clock, so I'm going to call to order this joint meeting of the City Council on IDA, and the IDA would also call themselves to order.
Call to order?
All right. Item one, consider closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711a6 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the government unit would be adversely affected proprietary. Need a motion in a second.
I move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Mumpower was absent for this meeting.
Okay. And now if we can have the IDA go into closed session.
Consider closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711a6 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected proprietary. Need a motion in a second?
I make a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Clerk, call the roll.
Conco?
Yes.
Marciano?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. And the IDA can come out of closed session now, too.
By rule call vote, IDA members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed.
Clerk, call the roll.
Conco?
Yes.
Marciano?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. The joint meeting is adjourned. All right. It's six o'clock. We're going to call to order the July 9th meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming out. I'm just going to say a couple of things real quick. We just came out of a, what I would consider, very productive meeting with the IDA. We're working on some good things and trying to see how we can go forward. On July the first, in the evening, we had a meeting with the school board to kind of discuss where we were going to go with our school buildings. And I feel like we've kind of made some progress, and we have got a plan in place. Dr. Perrigan's going to be looking at securing a location somewhere centrally located for a new school. So it will, in a couple fiscal years, require an additional appropriation from us, so we're going to work toward that. And the only other thing I've got is, everyone's probably seen the news by now, we've got a Planet Fitness who's going to be coming up to the Falls. So I just appreciate Katie Moore and his investment here in the city, not only on Euclid, but at Exit 5, and going forward, what he's going to be able to do for us. And I look forward to working with him. Does any other councilman have any comments?
Yeah. Without going into any great detail, I just want to give a shout-out to our fire department. I had a 911 situation at my house Sunday, and the fire department showed up, and a very quick response, even though it felt like an eternity. But it was a good, quick-time response, and they showed up calm and professional. And when you find yourself in a situation, you know, all the emotions flying and just fear overtakes you and things of that nature, I mean, you need professionals showing up that has the qualifications, experience, to handle situations. And, you know, I just want to say I appreciate them. They've done a great job, and this city is in good hands. But with that being said, too, God showed up, too. I mean, He had mercy on my family Sunday night. But that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
I want to follow up with the fire department, too. One thing that was lost on July 2nd, there was a fire here in the city where, I believe it was at Rice Terrace. And one thing that has been lost some way or another, there were actually two people rescued from the adjoining apartment complex. There were, the fire occurred early in the morning hours. The people that were living next door to the apartment that caught fire did not know it was on fire. They were asleep. When the fire department entered into that burning building, smoke had already consumed the entire room. They were still in bed asleep. And by virtue of them making the, taking the time and going into a burning building and doing that search, two people's lives were probably saved, or else they would have probably died of a lack of oxygen. So they do do a good job when they're called upon, and we do have a great fire department. We've also got a great police department. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Item C is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. It looks like we only have one person signed up for non-agenda, and I apologize in advance if I don't pronounce this right. Is it Liza Conway? All right. Come on up.
My name is Liza Conway, 836 State Street, Bristol, Tennessee. For the past nine years, I have operated Chain Free Bristol. We build fenced enclosures for pet owners that agree to release the dog, their dog, from the chain. We have released 144 dogs so far. We are a nonprofit. Some of the dogs that we have released have been dogs living in the city of Bristol, Virginia. I was contacted this past Sunday about a number of dogs on Massachusetts Avenue in Bristol, Virginia. I drove to the address yesterday. I was shocked by what I saw. I took pictures. I have pictures, if you would like to see them. I saw two dogs living in around 40-square-foot kennels. Imagine 40 square feet. A doghouse was inside of each kennel. I saw another dog living in a crate approximately two feet wide by three feet long, around six square feet. The neighbor told me this dog had been in that crate for a year. There were food and water bowls inside that crate, which would lead one to believe this dog was indeed living in six square feet. One dog was removed by Animal Control yesterday. This dog is skin and bones, absolutely skin and bones. And another residence on the same street, all within distance of like we are here, I saw two dogs in a 20-by-20 kennel baking in the sun. They have no shade. At another residence, a rottweiler was chained to a travel trailer with no visible doghouse. The city of Bristol, Virginia must meet state of Virginia law, however they may exceed state law. Chaining dogs in Bristol, Virginia. A dog may be chained as it is being born and remain chained until it dies. There are no numerical guidelines as to what is considered too hot or too cold for a dog to be outside. It can be outside in the rain, sleet, snow, hail. It doesn't make any difference. According to our current code, and I confirm this with Animal Control today, the chain must be three times the length of the dog from the tip of the nose to the tip of its tail. So a 12-inch-long chihuahua may be chained its entire life on a chain that is 36 inches long. And the chain may only weigh one-tenth of the weight of the dog. Kennel size. The city does not regulate kennel size, so that dog in the six-square-feet, that's cool by city code. Neither the state nor the city require shade, so a dog may bake in the sun, as we had a few summers ago over by the former Dairy Queen. The city limits by code residents to four cats. The city does not regulate the number of dogs a resident may have. I am here this evening to ask council, excuse me, to move into this century in regards to animal welfare. A city of chained dogs promotes six things: a negative public image, negative public safety, negative animal welfare, irresponsible use of tax dollars, you are spending money backwards, and it negatively impacts property values. I'm a Realtor. Try selling a home next door to chained dogs. It doesn't happen. As your current, as your ordinance are written now, you are paying your animal control officers to do a job that you have not given them the tools to be successful. Please ban, I'm asking you to please ban, the unattended chaining of dogs. This means that a dog may still be chained, however, a responsible person must be outside with the dog, and this would improve your animal welfare ordinances in general. I'm asking you to follow the lead of Cape Charles, Virginia, Hampton, Virginia, Norfolk, Virginia, Suffolk, Virginia, Alexandria, Virginia, Arlington County, Virginia, Chesapeake, Danville, Fairfax City, Newport News, North Hampton, Portsmouth, Richmond, Smithfield, Staunton, and Virginia Beach. Dogs deserve better, so do the hard-working people of Bristol, Virginia, as do your animal control officers. Thank you for your time. And if any of you would like to see these pictures, I have them with me. You would be surprised.
Thank you very much. And...
Pardon me?
I was going to ask you, could you send us the code? Okay.
I don't think we've met, but I follow the work your group does on your social media page, and we appreciate what you do.
On the Chain Free Bristol, there is now chain-free dogs. They operate out of Johnson City, Piney Flats, and Jonesboro. There are around 170 dogs they have released. They're an independent group as well. There's also Chain Free Greenville out of Greenville, Tennessee. There are around 50 dogs. So we're all moving along here, and it would be great to have some help and support from our elected officials.
Definitely.
Thank you very much. All right. Regular agenda. Item one, consider first reading of an Order 11 to the City Code pertaining to unlawful feeding of waterfowl in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Staff report.
Counsel, Officer Slagel, presentation here to you all in regards to this, so you can come on up and...
I'd approached the city manager about this a couple of weeks ago, I believe, and I had had some issues that I had just come across, and the exorbitant amounts of waste at area parks left behind by waterfowl populations that are at those parks. We can dive on into the presentation here if I may. Thank you. One day, I'll figure this out. Well, I turned it on. It was already on. There we go. Thank you, sir. I'll start off with a series of pictures. The first one's going to be downtown here at Cumberland Square Park. As you can see, the ducks and the geese that are visible in the picture, matter of fact, the duck there at the bottom is a non-native duck, I believe they're called muscovies, that were brought in sometime before I started in the animal control business. This picture, of course, is, it's going to be the sidewalk area between the stage downtown and the creek, as you can see. You'll note, if you can see, the other side of the creek bank there. I didn't do a very good job with pictures on this, at least to point it out, the absence of ducks and geese and other waterfowl on the other side of the creek. I only felt it necessary to point that out because you don't see people feeding any ducks on the other side of the creek there. On several occasions, of course, you see feeding and other activities of the like going on in this vicinity here that's in the picture, along the sidewalk, in front of the stage area, and down towards the creek bank. Close-up picture here, you'll note all the dark spots visible are different sites, droppings from these waterfowl. Not to blow you up with pictures of animal waste, but I felt it necessary, at least to make the point that I'm trying to make. Again, that's the area between the creek and the stage there on the sidewalk. All dark areas here that you see are examples of the animal waste. The picture on the right is actually on a rainy day. You can tell the difference in the color there between the sidewalks, so it's likelihood of being washed away by good rain, or generally, that doesn't happen, I guess, is what I'm Stage area, of course, this will point out the, again, the quantities of waterfowl droppings that are in this area of the park. I know a lot of times, matter of fact, just the last holiday we had, Independence Day celebration, you had some things going on. The stage was in use. Very nice get-together, mind you. I don't imagine anybody would go out and remove the animal waste, but it quite litters the area that you would sit at to enjoy whatever type of activities going on on the stage. Of course, we have examples of that. The sheet of paper there is just a standard sheet of print paper, if you will, whatever size this is. I'm not technical on what it's called, but just a standard sheet of paper. Outlined, you'll see different examples of waterfowl droppings in the vicinity compared to a sheet of standard print paper. I took two pictures. Kind of got some silly looks going all through the park, you know, taking pictures of a goose dropping, so I tried to limit it. I think you get the idea here from the two photographs. As you see, all areas of the park are affected. It's not just the area that is closest to the bank, the creek bank. I believe feeding and, you know, a known source of food, which is what these animals come to this area for, populations in the park have pushed them away, just necessarily from the creek bank, but as far back as the memorial, which is close to the corner of Cumberland Street and Lee Street. Another example is Eastern Little League Field. And these pictures have marked different sites of goose droppings with yellow flags. These are just your standard surveying flags, I guess. You're familiar with the type I'm talking about. Of course, this is a park where kids get together and play ball. I'm on the Little League Board. Not that it's of special interest to me because I'm on the Little League Board, but necessarily because of the populations that are at a park where I guess you wouldn't go and expect to see large quantities of waterfowl. 100 flags were purchased that I used just at this site. Again, each flag was marked a single location of animal droppings. I actually had to pick up the flags and move them three times to document each site. Again, there, I don't know how well you can see it. That's actually on the playing field. There were, again, more than 300 locations. I got tired after moving these three times. This is the sidewalk area. It's actually between the creek and the left-field section of the park. Areas of grass or other types of places you would expect to see animals, of course, it's not limited to grassy areas. It's all down the sidewalk and all over the parking lot. And those pictures, you can see again, went too fast there. Each raised indention there, it's obvious to see, and all of those are, again, different examples of waterfowl droppings. Next place I went was Sugar Hollow Park. In the following pictures, you'll mostly notice the absence of waterfowl droppings. This is going to be the first field, just as you come across the bridge there at the main parking lot. And that's on the playing field. Again, just as the other photos, dark spots you see are sites of the droppings. You'll notice, again, an absence of them there as compared to the other parks. Another field entrance. Again, sidewalks and the creek banks there with no obvious examples to show. I believe there's no obvious examples to show because typically, despite the fact that this is a pretty natural habitat at Sugar Hollow that's been created for these animals, you don't see a whole lot of people at this park feeding. I'm not ignorant to the fact that there's other food sources, but the animals, a lot like people, will take the path of least resistance. And if they're readily fed and it's very easy to come by, you know, why not go to what's easiest for you? More examples at Sugar Hollow. Essentially, what I just discussed, my beliefs on why the examples at this park are far fewer than at other city parks. I believe I'm an avid hunter. I like to duck hunt, like to goose hunt. And typically, the first place I would think up to go wouldn't be the parking lot of a baseball field or a park downtown, I guess. Aside from the obvious effects of the waste, you know, stepping in it and whatnot, getting it on your hands or your clothes, there are some zoonotic diseases associated that can be passed from animals and into humans. Just, not to bore you to death, but over the last decade, Canadian goose populations have increased very rapidly. Many cities have considered them pest animals. This isn't the first city before in this Commonwealth of Virginia that has heard this argument, I guess. Increase of numbers have caused potential health care concerns. There are physical, bacterial, parasitic, allergic and viral potential problems that can be found in the excrement of geese and the ducks. A goose can lay waste, so to speak, every 20 minutes, I believe, one per minute, I'm sorry, they can excrement up to one and a half pounds a day. I'm bad at math, but if you've got 100 geese at a specific location and a pound and a half per goose over days, months, and years, I guess you can see what I'm getting at. Some of the bacterial concerns, botulism, salmonella, E. coli, of course, which most of you are familiar with. Other concerns are Giardia, which is a gastrointestinal virus you see in, most prevalent in companion animals such as dogs and cats. Again, a single goose can defecate every 20 minutes. Source the material, which you can see, up to 100, or I'm sorry, a pound and a half a day. This is each day. Granted, these are called migratory waterfowl. Approximately 67% are non-migratory. You'll notice here, there's hardly a time of the year that you don't see large quantities of them at the parks that I've discussed to this point. Frenchen Park Host noted that beaches and other public areas littered with accumulated amounts of feces have been closed due to contamination. Another thing we discussed, research showing that excrement of geese contains wide varieties of pathogens capable of infecting humans. Of some of these parasites, one being Giardia, parasite causes gastrointestinal infection in humans. Particular concern due to organism's ability to survive in various environments, including its resistance to wastewater treatment, which I don't think would be a huge problem here, but nonetheless, it does exist. The second there, I failed miserably at Latin, so I'm not going to try to pronounce that. Another parasite which causes enteric disease. And of course, avian influenza or bird flu. This can be transmitted between birds easily. Bacteria that's prevalent, say the one we're almost familiar with is E. coli. It's an infection. What it can do to you, I guess, can vary a little bit, but often causes stomach issues, GI problems, diarrhea, cramps, vomiting, things of the like. Listeria, say, serious medical threat and infection. Can not say for pregnant women to be around. That's all I've got for you. Sorry to litter you with pictures of goose droppings.
Do we have any questions on it?
Yeah. Ms. Slagel, I was just going to ask, you showed the, of course, the area over here at Cumberland Square and Eastern Little League, and a very familiar, both of those areas.
Sure.
But are there any other hotspots in the city beyond those?
There are a couple. Mumpower Park had quite a bit of the same problem, I guess. I didn't document that. To be honest, it wasn't as heavy as the two parks that I did showcase, but it's not, no, the two that I shown are not the only areas of the city affected by it. I would just say the two that I know of anyways that are the most affected by it.
Any other questions, Paul?
I don't think, with this ordinance, I don't think feeding is the, or prohibition on feeding is the long-term, or I'm sorry, the short-term fix to the problem, but I think it's the best way to start. There are other methods going forward that can help reduce populations. If you'd like to discuss those, we can, but I believe this is, you know, over the long term, I think, the best place to start.
I was curious about, maybe you know, or maybe you don't know, what the Virginia State Wildlife and Game Commission says about, you know, this issue, and what their biologists are saying is the solution.
I'm not familiar. I would imagine their findings are similar to the source findings that I presented to you guys. If you're talking about actually removing them or reducing populations, of course, it's legal in the Commonwealth to relocate wildlife. There are other methods provided by the USDA, especially during nesting season, consist of mostly destroying their eggs. Nothing required on that, just that you report how many are destroyed. I believe that would probably be the best short-term answer to the problem, but...
I think it'd be a good idea just to contact the state biologist to see what they're, you know, saying, because we're not the only municipalities that's got this issue, so they've got to figure out a plan to deal with it somehow, so, you know, what their plan of action would be.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll also say, we ordered some lights that disrupt sleep patterns for geese. I'm not sure when they'll be in. Couple of weeks, we think, and we're going to attempt that to see if that will help the, if it works at Cumberland Square, we may attempt to get some more lights at other facilities, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, public comment on this. We have one person signed up, Tim Slagel.
My name's Tim Slagel. I'm here on behalf of Bristol, Virginia Little League. I've been a board member at Bristol, Virginia Little League for years. My primary function there as a board member is I'm over the grounds crew. I realize that Parks and Rec comes over and cuts the grass and takes care of that. My job is to have the field play-ready as far as dragging the field, digging the field, putting the lines on the field. I spend approximately 20 to 60 hours a week working on the ball field. And of those 20 to 60 hours a week, 10 to 12 hours of those are removing goose feces from the playing area. I have an issue with the fact that, Slagel just showed the diseases that are carried by the species. You've got kids out there from the age of four years old to the age of 12 years old who are playing baseball... who are playing baseball. If any of you guys, I know some of you, Kevin, I know you played baseball there, they're eating sunflower seeds and chewing bubble gum, you get a ground ball, there's no way to remove it off from the field. All right, you get a ground ball, it rolls through, for pardon of better word, a pile of goose feces. Kid throws the ball in, gets him a handful of sunflower seeds, puts them in his mouth. Is he going to get e. coli? Is he going to get listeria? I worry about this. Something else that I see in those hours that I spend working on the ball field, there are three or four times a day that people will pull into the parking lot. Their sole purpose for pulling into the parking lot is they'll pour out sometimes a trash bag full of breadcrumbs, crushed up crackers and things like that to feed the geese. Again, I'll say, also, I'm an avid hunter. If I'm going to go on a goose hunting trip, my first choice isn't going to be the parking lot of a baseball field. And I feel that if there were just signage or something put up to do not feed the waterfowl, there is a state code, I can't quote the state code, but I know there's a state code that will allow a city to adopt the ordinance to prohibit feeding of waterfowl. I feel if the city would put up that signage to prohibit the feeding of the waterfowl, if people would stop feeding them there in the parking lot at the ball field, that they would move on somewhere else, just like you said, Sugar Hollow, I mean, there are protected wetland areas there. What better place for a goose or a duck than a protected wetland area? But they're not going to go there, just like any of us. If I can get a free meal, I'm not going to go somewhere else and pay for one. And I would ask that the city do something about putting some signage or something at the Little League field to prohibit the feeding of the ducks, if for no other reason to protect the children.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking for a motion, a second, for first reading of the ordinance.
Make a motion that we have a first reading of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
I just made a couple of comments. I think one thing for the Eastern Little League Board to consider, maybe the city manager could work with them, is, you know, that open parking lot is pretty open during the day, so a lot of people are able to go all the way down to the field fence, right? So you might consider backing up and putting a temporary chain link or a chain fence across maybe halfway up that parking lot, so you can only come in, you know, say 30 feet deep. So you wouldn't allow people to come all the way down to the fence line and then, you know, allow them to get out of their cars and do the things.
I don't like to do that, but if the city owns the park.
No, that's why I'm saying city manager, you know, get with you guys, because that might prevent people from coming down in their car during lunchtime and doing what he's describing, so I think that'd be a pretty simple solution, at least temporary anyway, because we didn't used to have that problem down there. I mean, it just created itself over the last few years, so, but it is a problem. I mean, it's common sense, you don't feed the wildlife. I mean, that's why you don't feed deer, you just, you know, they're wild. You don't, you know, humans aren't supposed to feed wildlife. They can carry diseases, it can make the problem worse, they get dependent on the feeding, I mean, it's just, you know, never-ending cycle, so we got to use some common sense and not do it, and then try to put up some preventative measures to, you know, in addition to what we're going to do tonight, to try to help alleviate the problem.
And I'm sorry, should my motion for the reading of the ordinance be by caption only?
No.
No, I can read this one, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of echo what Mr. Mumpower said. It's, we all like the ducks, we like the geese, we don't want to run them off, but it is better to not feed them because you do create a problem. And I think somebody, a couple of weeks ago, when we were discussing this, had mentioned, you know, you don't have this big infestation necessarily as much, you know, on Old Avenue, or maybe you do have this infestation on Old Avenue and Highway, but nobody feeds them. You know, they kind of, they'll stay near water, obviously, but you would ideally like them to stay away from where there's a lot of people, you know, because it does become a public health situation, so I'm totally in favor of this, and I think this is a good first step to be able to try and fix, try and fix the problem, and I appreciate the work you did on your presentation. I'm going to go ahead and make the joke, I felt like it was a crappy job to go out and have to take those pictures, but thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and read the, oh, we need a roll call, don't we? If you'll call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Ready?
Go ahead.
An ordinance to add Section 1411 to the city code pertaining to unlawful feeding of waterfowl in the city of Bristol, Virginia, section amended, Section 1411. Bid ordained by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, that Section 14-11 is hereby added to the Code of the City of Bristol, Virginia, and ordained to read as follows. Section 14-11, unlawful feeding of waterfowl. A pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 29.1-527.1, the feeding of migratory and non-migratory waterfowl is hereby prohibited in the city, provided however that no violation shall be deemed to occur unless signs giving notice of the prohibition set forth in this section are posted in a conspicuous location surrounding the area and a law enforcement officer has provided a prior warning that continued feeding of wildlife will result in a violation of this section. For the purpose of this section, one, migratory and non-migratory waterfowl shall be those species defined by the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries as any and all waterfowl in the Antetide family, including native, non-native, domestic ducks and geese, and any crossbreeds or hybrids of these birds. Feed shall mean to give, place, expose, deposit, or scatter any edible material. See, any person violating the provision of this section shall be subject to a civil fine of $50.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance to add New City Code, Section 50-177, Overnight Recreational Development Standards. Revis existing Section 50-109B and Section 50-123B, and add definitions to Section 50-28. Staff report.
Mayor and council members, the Planning Commission, as you know, has developed this new zoning code section to address campgrounds, RV parks, and overnight cabins, along with revisions to the list of permitted uses in B3 and A zoning districts, and then the four new definitions in Section 50-28. Joint public hearing was held with the Planning Commission on May 28th, and then following their recommendation at your last meeting, June 25th, the City Council adopted the first reading of the ordinance, making two changes to F and L, and those are shown in the document that you have tonight, those two changes that remain. And so now, it's on the agenda to, for you all to consider the second reading.
All right, thank you. Looks like we don't have anyone signed up for public comment, so next is council motion, a second, for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
I move that we have the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Farnham and second by Vice Mayor Hartley. Is there any council discussion?
I was just going to say, I know we've talked about this for a little bit, and I think it's good that we have it in there because we used to not have anything at all about this, and I know we've talked about it and tweaked it a little bit and made some changes, so I think it's a good thing that we have it. Was the recommendation from the Planning Commission to, with the changes we made, do they have any questions about anything?
Oh, no, they had revised their recommendation before your last meeting.
Okay.
And you all changed it after that.
All right, looks like there's no other discussion. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Upstein.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
So, reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Title, creating regulations addressing overnight recreational development, and ordinance amending Article 2, Zoning of the City Code for Bristol, Virginia, creating a new Section 50-177, Overnight Recreational Development Standards under Division 10, supplemental regulations in addition to adding definitions under Section 50-28, and revising and adding overnight recreational development as a permitted use in Section 50-109 and 50-123.
All right, thank you. Now we're looking for a motion, a second, for adoption of the ordinance.
I move that we adopt the ordinance as read.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, motion to adopt is made by Mr. Farnham and second by Vice Mayor Hartley. Is there any discussion here? All right, if the clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Upstein.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item three, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 70 of the City Code relating to collections. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the second reading of the ordinances that we have been talking about for quite some time in regards to collection practices within the city of Bristol. There, this is, we have made the amendments that council recommended at the last reading on June 23rd, I believe. So I think there may have been some items that Mr. Hartley had recognized or maybe wanted some more clarification on.
Yeah, yeah, give me a second, figure out where those are. I think in Section 7027A, there it talks about bulk waste collection. When I read that section, it just seems like a list, it's not really a sentence. And I think there was another issue like that, too, we corrected, that, somewhere else, but that, to me, that just, when I read that, I just see a list.
Counsel, it looks like there was a section, I don't believe it was, we have two, this is a section that actually should have been published in this document. It may be best to table this tonight. Let me get the, we have two or three versions of this going around, so I think the wrong one was just inserted, I think we'd probably just better off the table, let me clean it up one final time and bring it back to you to have it done correctly.
All right, is there any kind of action we want to take?
So, the wording is, I'd move to table this whole item until the next meeting.
That's correct.
Okay.
Second. Okay. All right, so, there's a motion by Mr. Farnham to table this until the next meeting, and a second by Mr. Mumpower. If the, is there any further discussion on it? If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item four, consider a supplemental appropriation of $100,000 to the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools Capital Project FY 2020 Budget. Staff report.
Counsel, Dr. Perrigen is in Richmond giving a presentation to the Virginia Department of Education this evening, he couldn't be here tonight, so I will step in at his place. This is the second appropriation of the $200,000 the council agreed to on May the 14th of 2019 in order for the school to address immediate ADA accessibility and safety issues. Council approved the first $100,000 appropriation at the May 28th meeting, and as I said previously, this is the second $100,000 appropriation. There was a letter in your packet dated July 1st requesting that appropriation.
All right, thank you. Looks like there is no public comment, no one signed up for public comment, so looking for a motion and a second on this.
I would move that we appropriate the $100,000 to the Bristol, Virginia Schools Capital Project Fund.
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Vice Mayor Hartley and second by Mr. Farnham. Council discussion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. All right, well, we're all aware and we all know that the school systems are crumbling, the school buildings, because of the lack of maintenance and repair, but I am going to say this, my personal opinion is that the monies that we allocate to the school system for capital improvements, the school board has made it perfectly clear that those are our buildings, and that once we give them money, they have established multiple times, that once we give them money, they can do with it as they see fit, they don't need any council guidance or anything else, because once we hand that money over, it's And there was a list of items that was on the list to be done before school gets back, where are we at on that? Okay, and also, we need to really think about, you know, these buildings being city-owned properties, and are we going to control the money with the RFPs and get the estimates and take care of the buildings on our end, or are we going to continue to allow the school system to control everything and this board have no input whatsoever? So those are questions that we need to ask ourselves, and we need to, we need to come to an agreement, whether they're going to get it all and do what they want to with it, or whether we're going to sit here and send out the RFP ourselves with the list of what they recommend the updates be. I'm not aware of any other schools being worked on right now, other than Van Pelt.
I asked Dr. Perrigen about it today, he says architect's been hired, the plans have been developed, the RFP is currently out. The work will start this summer, but it will not be completed this summer. I think they'll probably continue to work on it throughout the school year until it gets complete. He said he would try to get me more documentation by the end of the day today, but I don't guess he's had a chance to since he was traveling to and from, to Richmond.
Okay, all right, and with that being said there, I mean, we do need to think further out in advance, because we've missed this whole summer having the schools worked on. We need RFP sent out three to six months before the end of school, to where we can get everything laid out, to where every day those kids are out of school, there's hammer saws, brick and mortar, and everything else going and being done, the whole end time they're off for summer break. Not having construction crews in there with kids for a wide array of reasons why you don't need construction going on in a school with kids. So we need to plan this out in better detail and be better prepared for next summer. But we still have some discussion that this council needs to talk about, as far as are we just going to turn the money over, or are we going to actually send out the RFPs because they're our buildings?
Well, I would say, you know, from my perspective, the whole capital allocation of funds in the city has been backwards from day one. You know, we don't have, we don't have any, we don't have any process that really controls how this process should go. We've gotten a little better, but you know, the first thing you do is you go out with RFPs. You go out with requests for quotes, you get your projects defined, you get them prioritized, you go out with RFPs. And then you come in and you sift through those RFPs and see, you know, how those look, and then those RFPs turn into requests for funds. And we're trying to do it backwards, we're trying to get the money out, then RFPs are still in process, that's backwards. So you've got to change the process here to have better control over, you know, the allocation of, especially when it's capital, especially when it's construction-type funds, because, you know, those contracts can get sideways on you in a hurry. Construction companies can, you know, get other projects that come in between yours and the planning of yours, and all of a sudden, yours gets pushed out and the costs go sideways on you, so we've got a lot of work to do on just the whole process that we go through. So, yeah, we should have RFPs already here to review before we vote on $100,000. We should know what it's going to directly, RFP number XXXX. So we've got a lot of work to do on our process, it's not a good process.
And here's another thing that was brought up in our two-on-twos this morning here. The city really needs to look at the option of having a three- or four-man crew that does nothing but go around pulling maintenance and repairs on city-owned business, on city-owned buildings. Because when the city sends out an RFP, the cost comes back at a much, much greater cost than it would if you was just a private person out there trying to have something done, or a business out there being done, for whatever the reason is. Case in point, I was shocked and set back when this city had to pay over $21,000 for a central heat and air system in a 3,000-square-foot dog kennel, when any day of the week, anybody sitting in this room could pick up the phone and call. sitting in this room could pick up the phone and call a stranger that you have never dealt with before and have that same unit installed at half the price. When you send out RFPs, the cost of doing business just rose out the roof, and if the city could get itself in a position to have its own crew, that's a dedicated crew to do nothing but remodel and refurbish its buildings and keep everything up to where it's supposed to be, and cut out the vast majority of these RFPs, we would save a ton of money and our buildings would be in much better shape.
I agree.
I think what you guys brought up is a, is a good point because that was, you know, something we've talked about. The buildings are owned by the city, but they're used by the school system. So, as far as maintenance, you know, who ma, is that more of the city, um, budget on our side, or is that more of the school system on their side? And not just day-to-day maintenance, but big, major renovations. But, um, as far as what, what we're doing tonight, um, you know, we've been talking a lot about the long-term plan for the school system, particularly the elementary schools, and how many will we have, and will we build a new one, and where will it be? And ultimately, there's some input on, on us, from us, but input from the school board as well. So, I'm, I'm excited that we're working with them, um, but as long as we're looking at our long-term plan, we can't also forget about some of the short-term needs that we need right now. So, uh, some of this money is going towards that, some, some ADA compliant bathrooms that need to be, um, upfitted and remodeled, and also some safety vestibules, which will improve school safety at, at all four elementary schools that we have. So, I think it's, um, I think it's a good thing that we're, we're looking at it both ways, our long-term needs and also our short-term needs.
I mean, as far as what we're gonna vote on here in a few minutes, that, I agree. I think it's something that it's good that we're able to do this. It meets some immediate needs to, to deal with problems that have been there for a while, but particularly, uh, some, uh, issues around accessibility and issues around safety, and so it'll make some immediate improvements, uh, to, to the elementary schools, all, all of the schools, this funding will help, uh, do that. As far as the process, uh, you know, we, we, we're the appropriating body to the school board. They're the ones that, um, put out the RFPs, that they're an elected body just as we are, so, you know, I don't know that we need to be doing that. That's, that's why we have a school board. That's, you know, we appropriate the money to them and they allocate it. In this case, they, uh, tell us the need for what this particular appropriation is for, but, uh, as far as the RFPs and the management of all that, that, I think that's overstepping our bounds. That's why they're an independent body. You know, people elect school board just as well as they elect us, so, uh, they are held accountable to, to the voters. So, I don't know, you know, I think, to me, that, that our role is to, to appropriate the money to them, that that's why they have an independent school, school board.
Yes, I mean, I, I kind of agree. I've agreed with some of the things I've heard from everybody tonight. Um, I, I really think we can't micromanage, you know, every, every nail they put in the wall over there at the schools, but as far as, as far as thinking long-term, we, we do need to think long-term about, you know, that, you know, this is, this is a first step, this is not the last step, you know, by any means, 'cause, you know, whether we build another school, whether we don't, you know, we've still got the middle school and the high school, there could be an issue in a few years. We've got the school, the elementary schools we don't replace that are gonna be an issue, and, you know, have issues already. So, I mean, this is, this is a great first step, you know. This and the $100,000 from the previous fiscal year are, are great first steps, but, um, it should by no means be the last step, so. And, and I was really excited to hear, you know, maybe Mr. Wingard say that, you know, when we come into budget season, we might wanna look at having four more employees for maintenance, you know, or, or repairs, or whatever you wanna call it, because as it stands, I mean, we're a little bit understaffed, and we would save some money if we were able to take some of the work in-house, but I don't know how much that we can really afford to do, you know, but I was excited to hear you say that at least. So, hopefully we can do something with that. But, yeah, I'm excited about this $100,000. It's a, it's a good first step, but we need to, need to do a lot more, and I think we're making some progress with the school board from our discussions, first of July, last of, uh, May, so I think we're making some good progress with them, and I'm trying to see where it goes.
Well, I'll follow up on one more comment. I, I, I don't think it's micromanagement, I think it's fiduciary responsibility on this council. When you're spending taxpayer dollars, you've got a responsibility to know how that money's being spent. So, that means RFPs, we should see line item details of where that money's being spent because there is example after example where this city and this school system has misspent taxpayer monies, and that's a fact. And I am tired of that. I'm tired of spending my taxpayer money, and I'm tired of this community spending it because we don't have the time or the patience to micromanage, which is exactly what we should be doing.
Exactly.
Counsel, if I could just, just remind you that this appropriation will come from the unassigned fund balance. Our policy states that when monies are appropriated from the unassigned fund balance, that it's presented as a regular agenda item, and I'd just like the minutes to reflect that.
Thank you. Now, do we have any other council discussion right now? So, if we don't, I, I know you came in late, so if Ms. Marney would like to, do you have something you wanna say? You didn't get to sign up for anything, so.
I want, I want to be appropriate to the procedure, but something has clicked in my mind that, that is resulting in your discretion.
Well, we haven't seen you in so long. If you'd like to have three minutes, you can take it.
Are you ready, man, or you're...
I'm gonna let you decide. Keep it around three minutes, though, if you can.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I also went through the public school systems, as did most of my family. I'm very familiar with this whole situation. As this discussion has proceeded, I remember back a number of years, it's probably been in the nature of 20 years. It's when King Tilly was here, whenever that was. The school board made an enormous sale, sales pitch to the city council for an elevator for one of the schools, $75,000 for an elevator. They did this two or three separate years, and that elevator isn't in yet, which goes to what Mr. Mumpower was saying, and also what Mr. Wingard has said. There has to be accountability. If this council is gonna give my money, I pay tax. If you're gonna give my money away, you better be prepared to tell me why you're doing it, where it's going, and what about it, or I'll be in here with a lawyer. And I, I agree that the city council, and I think it's a state law, it used to be, I guess it still is, I don't know, I think it is, the city council can only give a block of money, period. That's all you can do, a sum of money, period. The school board determines how that money will be used, but to go back to what these two men have said and what I'm saying, there must be accountability for how this money is used. And I sat there, they asked for $75 this year, and the next year they hadn't used it, and they said, "Well, we need that, we really do need that elevator." So, they ended up, I know how these games are played, come on, folks. It just happens they're better at playing them than some other people are. They know how to play the games. I know, I've seen the whole thing. But they got an extra $150,000 they wanted for something else, but it was, the selling point was, we have got to put in an elevator. That was the selling point, and the council said, "Well, fine, if you need an elevator, that's fine, and, uh, we will appropriate the money, and you use it for what you told us you needed." And they did not. It's not in yet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm so glad I didn't have to gavel you. All right, is there any other discussion? All right, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Who made the motion?
Uh, it was, uh, Mr. Hartley and Mr. Farnham seconded.
Thank you. Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, item five, consider closed session pursuant to Section 2.2 dash 3711A1, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Discussion consideration or, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body appointments. Looking for a motion and a second.
I move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated. Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Farnham and second by Mr. Mumpower. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session. Executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Uh, all right. Item six is, uh, consider appointments of boards and commissioners, so I'm just gonna run through a list and kinda tell you what we've, uh, what we've done. So, we're ready to make appointments on some of these, and on a couple, we're not. Uh, for the Bristol Redevelopment Housing Authority, we're going to make a reappointment of Denise Franklin, and we're going to appoint, appoint as a new appointment, Mark Koffer, or Koffer. Uh, for the Transportation Safety Commission, uh, we're gonna make an appointment of Danny Hunt. For the Bristol Public Library Board, we're going to appoint Don Ashley. For the Highlands Community Service CPMT Board, we're going to appoint Dr. Rick Carroll. Now, what we're going to do on, um, Bristol Public Library Board, there's a second seat, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, the Highlands Community Services Board, the Ninth District Development and Financing Committee, and the IDA and the Planning Commission. Uh, we're gonna hold off on making appointments on those. Uh, some of them we still need appoint, some of them we still need applicants, some of them we've been fortunate to have multiple applicants. Uh, so, we're gonna leave it open until August the 9th at close of business for any applications for any of those boards I listed, um, with the intent of doing interviews if necessary at our first meeting in August, uh, which I believe is August the 13th. So, I'm looking for a motion and a second on the appointments and reappointments I listed.
I would move that we, uh, appoint the individuals you named, uh, as you mentioned.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, uh, item seven is the consent agenda. What would we like to do on this?
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Mr. Farnham. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. We stand adjourned.